And we'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
I support that.
Thank you. There is Julie.
Mr. Buckey.
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Motion is approved. We have no public participation tonight, so we'll move on to discussion of superintendent candidate finalists. John, did you want to say a few words before we have our discussion? Or would you, do you want to wait till after we conclude?
If you don't mind, I'll take just a couple of minutes to the process. I think it's been a long and thorough process to recap how long it's been and all that's been involved. So believe it or not, this started way back in December when you selected Michigan Leadership Institute to assist you with the search. And we held our first planning meeting on February 3rd, met with stakeholder groups in February where we gathered input on the candidate profile. We posted the position and then accepted applications through February and March. Of course, we had a pause due to the school shutdown. And then we did extend the posting period until June 1st. So on June 8th, we all came together. You folks screened all 29 applications and selected six of the applicants to interview, conducted the initial interviews the week of June 15th, selected two finalists on June 18th, conducted second round interviews last Monday, the 22nd. And then the following Tuesday and Wednesday last week, we held a virtual question and answer sessions with administrators, staff members, and community members. Board conducted virtual site visits last Thursday and Friday. So a lot of steps involved, and that gave you a lot of data to consider. So what you've had to ponder these last few days is the finalist applications, resumes, cover letters, any additional information as supplied by the finalists to you, your interview notes from the first and second round interviews, and I know you were taking copious notes, stakeholder feedback from the first and second round interviews, and then also from the Q and A sessions, the virtual site visits, reference summaries that I provided. And you did all of this through the filter of who best fits your candidate profile. So you certainly have done your due diligence. You've completed a very strategic, thoughtful, and deliberate process. And I think at this point, you're very well prepared to make a critical decision. So it's that time for you to decide where you want to go with this. And if you wish to offer the position of superintendent to one of your two highly qualified final candidates. And so with that, I turn it back over to you, President Weedman.
Okay, thank you, John. So as we did the last time, we'll have a discussion opportunity first, and I'd like to hear from each individual board member before we move to any action item, if we choose to do that. And as John mentioned, and we've talked about previously, there are really three options on the table. One, two options are the two candidates, and the third option is to pause the search, and we need to put that out there as, as all of the available options. So that being said, Burgett, would you lead things off, please?
I would be happy to. I was going to try to be concise, but I have things that I felt needed to be said, so bear with me as I read through this. What a privilege it has been to be a part of the superintendent search process, a process for which I've been completely invested, and a process in which I have learned a lot from everyone involved. Tonight, I am very excited to share with you all that my selection and recommendation for our next superintendent is Mr. Ben Kirby. Mr. Silvery alluded to the many things that we've been through, and so I won't revisit every, every step of the, of the work we've been involved with, but I want to address the site visit that we attended remotely for Mr. Kirby, which included 34 people. It was comprised of parents, teachers, building administrators from all levels, including early childhood, their Board of Education members, local business members, the mayor of South Lion, central office staff, the special education director, a media specialist, literacy coach, athletic director, and the recently retired South Lion superintendent and their interim superintendent. I've also read the online stakeholder input comments through a few times, of which are approximately 108 plus, along with emails, phone calls, and texts that I've personally received. I made additional efforts to personally contact some of my colleagues that know firsthand of Mr. Kirby's work in South Lion and also in Ionia. While there were some concerns expressed in the stakeholder feedback, I am quite pleased to share that all the information I received and researched has quelled any concerns and given me nothing but confidence and excitement in selecting Mr. Kirby for our next superintendent. I've kept the candidate profile next to me whenever working through an interview or reviewing candidate information. The leadership qualities of Ben Kirby are extremely well suited to move us forward, and I find, for me, he checks off every box on our list. The people on the remote site provided us with a working picture of the leadership qualities and strengths of Mr. Kirby, and the messages shared were consistent from all of the groups of people involved, including: He's approachable, a man of character, well-rounded, humble, supportive, visible, and available, has integrity, is student-focused, relational, a relationship builder, informed, researches to make decisions, he's proactive, he unites the staff, a good sense of humor, he seeks first to understand, and asks a lot of questions so that he can understand. He's an outstanding writer and communicator, he's quiet but thoughtful, knowledgeable and loyal, values knowledge and opinions, masterfully sifts through the information to make wise decisions, he's inspirational, strong and calm leader, makes people feel valued, has an incredible knack for relationships, is family-oriented, he's a people person. He's an artful team leader, helps others grow professionally and personally, he allows others to lead and supports his leaders. He's an amazing leader of leaders, values kids, gets on their level, looks them in the eyes. He's compassionate but firm, he's a deep thinker, he pushes your thinking, and he understands school finance, district curriculum, facilities, personnel supervision, community relations, and understands and values school culture. He's a driver of student and adult success, holds himself and others accountable for serving students, he's not afraid of difficult decisions, he's always doing what's best for kids. He's been a consistent, successful leader through his career, and he's experienced in some of the most difficult positions in which a school district has. He wants students to be the highest and best version of themselves, and he desires this of his staff as well. His resume demonstrates clear leadership success as he has used his skills in a variety of roles that have granted his career and the depth of knowledge that will serve him well as our superintendent, and that was confirmed by those involved in that site visit. Mr. Kirby will honor the past as we grow into the future. Consistently, the South Lion Community Schools staff, administration, and community members were devastated that he might be leaving them, and yet they were excited for this opportunity for him. I believe we have found in Mr. Kirby a solid leader with the strengths and skills to carry Lake Orion Community Schools forward into a very bright future. Thank you.
You're muted, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you, Burgett. Dana, would you share your thoughts, please?
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Burgett. First, I want to thank both the candidates for applying for this position. You're both highly qualified. It was clear that you're advocates for students, for public education. You should both be very proud of yourself, and I'm honored that you both wanted to be dragons. I usually don't read stuff. I like to kind of talk from the top of my head, but this is the most important decision I believe I will, or the most important vote I will have as a school board member, and I wanted to make sure my thoughts were organized. So here I go. I know there are a number of stakeholders watching this meeting tonight, so before I share my selection, I want to share a bit about this process and the depth and seriousness as to how I and my fellow board members have delved into selecting our next superintendent. First, I want to say that our board is not your typical board. We are a boots-on-the-ground type of board. That means we don't sit here every other Wednesday night and simply pass motions. We become immersed in the community, and we put our students first. The clerics' example I can give is the 2018 bond campaign. In many districts, parent groups form these committees, and they work on all the strategies of passing a bond. But that's not what happened in Lake Orion. In Lake Orion, our board stepped up. We knew intimately what was at stake: program cuts, job loss, et cetera. We knew our students deserved the best. My house became camping headquarters. In addition to our day jobs, we ate, breathed, slept, the bond. Vacations were canceled, and sleep was lost. It was demanding both mentally and physically. I've never worked with a group of people so dedicated, and I couldn't be more proud of the work we did in helping pass a bond that is now showing its importance more than ever. I don't say this for kudos. That is not what this board is about. I say this so you know that we are, that we use that same amount of energy, time, and dedication to choose our next superintendent. We appreciate the stakeholders that have watched interviews, participated in stakeholder meetings, and of course, given us feedback. Your time is recognized, and we are grateful. As board members, we have done all of these things, as well as pour over resumes, letters of reference, conducted virtual site visits, and other areas of due diligence. Last Thursday and Friday, we spoke with over 70 people during our site visits. This included teachers, union leaders, parents, former and current superintendents, advocacy groups, community representatives, principals, central office administration, direct reports, and indirect reports, and current and previous employers. The feedback was invaluable, and feedback for both candidates was consistent across the board. I believe we did choose the top two candidates, and I think they would both be positive agents of change for our district and bring fresh perspective and leadership to Lake Orion. With that being said, my responsibility is to choose the best fit for Lake Orion schools at this time. Most people have the benefit of viewing the candidates through a single or double lens. I have the benefit of viewing the candidate through several lenses: parent of an incoming third and fifth graders, community members, Lake Orion alum, and a teacher, to name a few. But right now, the lens that I have been elected to view it through is that of a board member, which encompasses many factors too long to list at this time. But rest assured, I did my homework, and I approached this process with integrity. Based on my due diligence, I believe the right for, fit for our district is Mr. Ben Kirby. The reasons are many, but I will highlight some of the more important reasons I chose Mr. Kirby. Mr. Kirby is very student-centered. This has been illustrated through his creation of advocacy groups, Capturing Kids' Heart, and the Flipping Group. He also believes in a not-one-size-fits-all when it comes to students. Words that the stakeholders consistently use during the site visits to describe his leadership are calm, reflective, collaborative, transparent, develops a clear plan for action, listens, decisions, decisions are based on research, responsive, rolls up his sleeves, not afraid to make difficult decisions, quiet but knowledgeable, exceptional communicator, especially in written form, passionate about helping others grow while still continuing on his growth path, holds people accountable in a fair way, and empowers other. Mr. Kirby presented a thorough 90-day plan. The common thread throughout the plan is his focus on building relationships and trust. During our interview process, Mr. Kirby had not acknowledged that he does not know everything, and he continually used the phrase, "I'm going to hit the ground learning." Mr. Kirby was the candidate that did the most homework and was most knowledgeable about our district. That being said, the expectation that he knows the entire picture of our values and our district is not a reasonable expectation. This is part of his 90-day plan, and I believe Mr. Kirby has the leadership capacity to recognize our values and prioritize accordingly. During the site visits, I asked, I asked how Mr. Kirby handled parent backlash regarding his district's COVID response. Several people looked at me puzzled. They said Mr. Kirby was leading the charge and that he is a proactive communicator. Parents were updated regularly, and the community was happy with how the crisis was handled. I believe having him at the helm as we navigate this school year will be of great value to our district. He is very visible, not just at school events, but throughout the community. Many stakeholders share that if hired by Lake Orion, they will not just be losing a valuable member of their district team, but in the community as well. There were many stakeholders who were happy that Mr. Kirby would be furthering his career. They were also visibly upset to be losing him as a team member. And finally, Mr. Kirby stated several times, and it was echoed by several people on the site visits, that he's a strong proponent for social, emotional care and growth across the board, from staff to students. As a passionate advocate for mental health and wellness, especially in children, I am very excited to partner with Mr. Kirby and the Sarita. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Dana. Jake, would you like to share your thoughts, please?
Yes, thank you. As the newest member of the Lake Orion Community Schools Board of Education, it was not too long ago that I took the introductory training classes from the Michigan Association of School Boards. They kept reinforcing that school boards have two roles: represent the community in setting a vision and developing policies for the school district, and to employ a superintendent to implement those on behalf of the board. The second of those tasks is the most important decision a board of education will face. To think when we started down this path almost nine months ago, we thought we had plenty of time to get through all the steps and be ready with a decision to hire somebody by July 1st. Obviously, the coronavirus changed our plans, but it did not stop us from completing all of the steps we had agreed were needed to conduct a thorough search. I want to thank all my fellow board members for bringing a variety of insights throughout this process. I want to thank our consultant, who provided a steadying presence as we faced unprecedented challenges. My sincerest appreciation goes to the entire pool of applicants, especially those who were invited to interview. I am thoroughly convinced that we had a high-quality field, as they made it extremely difficult to narrow the field down to two finalists. I also extend my gratitude to all the stakeholders who provided some form of feedback. Please know that I did incorporate your viewpoints into my decisions. To the two finalists, you both impressed me as being exceptional people. Your concern for others always shined through. It was evident in your interviews, but also in the virtual site visits. You have clearly not only impacted the organizations which you have worked for, but you have touched the lives of the people you work with. This evening, I would be absolutely satisfied if the meeting concludes with either candidate being offered the opportunity to become the next superintendent of Lake Orion Community Schools. They would both bring an exceptional blend of professional experience and personal relationship skills, which would benefit our school district. However, in the end, we cannot offer the job to both candidates, and this process has been set up for me to put my support behind one candidate. As such, I will endorse Mr. Ben Kirby. Both of Ben's interviews left me saying, wow. I wanted to learn more about him because his calm, reasoned approach to answering questions and the answers he provided seemed to be a great fit for our district. Ben described himself as a listener who liked to collaborate. In his virtual site visit, everybody reinforced his interview response indicating he was an active listener who likes to ask why. As Ben said during his interview, "Doing this might make the team uncomfortable, but it is part of the process that challenges thinking to get the team to the growth edges. That is the type of person who will be able to step in during a difficult time and gain the trust needed to be a great leader, while also maintaining a long-term perspective to help Lake Orion Community Schools continue to thrive and reach new levels. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing from the rest of my board, or my fellow board members."
Steve, would you like to share your thoughts, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My recommendation is for the school board to offer the position of superintendent to Mr. Kirby. He has solid credentials, has proven himself to be an outstanding leader, and has been fortunate enough to have some great mentors. He's down-to-earth, humble, has got a kind heart, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Scott? Please?
Thanks, Jim. I'm very thankful and excited with the two finalists that have applied for the superintendency at Lake Orion Community Schools. Obviously, this has been a very tough decision for all of us. If, if folks knew the, the, the amount of data, like Mr. Silvery was saying, that we've, we've gone through and that we have been able to mine and glean, it was awesome. I mean, it was, it was literally one of the most thorough processes that I've ever been through. It, both finalists brought forth a ton of experience and expertise, and I believe either person, like Jake said, would do an excellent job for the district, but we do have to pick one. And I am pleased to support Ben Kirby for the role of superintendent. I feel that his many years of K-12 experience, administration, his stellar references and accomplishments, accomplishments pushed him to the front for me. I would also like to thank Dr. Kessler for making the decision, a hard one for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Nate, you share your thoughts, please?
Sure, thanks, Jim. John, before we get going, thank you for your stewardship and leadership of this process. Also, thanks to each of the candidates who spent their time preparing. Thank you to all the supporters who spent time in letters of recommendation and participating in each step of the process, whether it was the original applicants, the first round, or the finalists. And the community, the community members took a lot of time to engage and provide input. One thing's certain, this wasn't taken lightly. It, it has been thorough. Like each of us, I did the process that John described. I looked back at the interview notes, at the applications, the letters of reference, reread the feedback, watched the recordings of the meetings and site visits. And throughout all of that, I kept coming back to a real feeling of gratitude, and that gratitude was stemming from a very clear place. And that's the incredible work that's been done to date in Lake Orion by our leaders, our teachers, and our staff. The process, for me, validated a perspective that we began with, one that we're not coming from a position of needing transformational change, but rather, we have an opportunity for a new superintendent to join a strong team and figure out how to contribute, optimize, and push us to new heights. I was challenging myself, looking at the candidates, and asking, what do they bring that we don't already have? As they shared stories of their approaches to leadership, culture, equity, feedback, engagement of the community, building trust, it was really impressive, and I kept finding myself thinking, that's awesome, what else do you have? And as I thought about that more, it really occurred to me that if our current team was weak, it would have been really easy to find someone. And our current team is so strong that it makes finding someone with the right talent, experience, and perspective, and personality very difficult to do. And that's a wonderful challenge. I think that's a challenge we should all be grateful for. To find an All-Star, to join a team of All-Stars is not an easy thing. When I looked at the candidate profile, it was also perfectly clear that we had high-caliber candidates from the start through the finish. And out of our two finalists, they each brought real strengths. They each could answer that question, what else do you have? And when you hear the endorsement of two state superintendents, you hear the endorsement of seasoned professionals from all levels, from large and small districts across the state, you hear consistent references to hard work, character, humility, servant leadership, and I really appreciated even hearing humor and fun. You know you have a talented pool to select from. Both our finalists brought depth, they bring commitment, and I was glad to hear from each that their view that to work in Lake Orion is an opportunity to listen, learn, and support the current teams and join our leaders in progress to take us even higher. Given all this, I can say without reservation that the path forward is exciting and encouraging. I'm extremely grateful for Heidi for setting the high bar in the field, for Cabinet and Administration for exemplifying what it means to be a high-performing team, and to our teachers and staff for making our district a talent magnet. I was so impressed by Dr. Kessler's compassion for all learners, her breadth of differentiated experiences, and her expertise in data-driven insights. I was so impressed by Mr. Kirby's breadth of experiences across roles and levels with his deliberate, thorough focus on developing his career toward the superintendent role. And I'm so grateful for our existing leadership team for being so strong that it's a tough challenge to find a leader with the talent to join them. I'm glad I found one. I think both candidates would be exceptional. And looking back across the entire process with a careful eye and rigor, I'm glad to support Mr. Kirby to join an All-Star, an All-Star to join a team of All-Stars. He has the tools needed to join and contribute on day one.
Thank you, Nate. I'd like to begin by first thanking the board for their work on this process. This is an extensive process, and unless you were engaged in it on an ongoing basis, you really can't know, as I think Scott said, the volume of information that we had to really review carefully to get to know the candidates, and, and the candidates, not only the six candidates, but the entire pool of candidates. I especially want to thank both, both of our finalists for their work in preparing our site visits. There was some extensive planning that went into those site visits that Burgett and Dana and I were on last Thursday and Friday. And they were well-organized, thoughtful, had a very appropriate mix of people, and it gave us particular insight into both of these candidates. My previous position has been that my desire was to return to a pause on this search and to take a closer look at a new expanded pool sometime in the near future. After going through this process and learning more about both candidates, I share my opinion is the same as many of the board members, that we really had two very good candidates to choose from. But in looking at it and circling back to the element of fit for our district, which is, is key for success for the district and our new superintendent, it brought me back to Ben Kirby. And I believe that his background and experience will provide the right fit as we move forward. And I'm pleased to express my support for, for Ben Kirby. Are there any further comments before we move to our action item? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to...
I'm ready for you.
Fire, fire when ready.
Jim and board, I move to hire Ben Kirby, superintendent of Lake Orion Community Schools, pending board approval of a contractual agreement and authorization, and I'm sorry, pending approval of a contractual agreement and authorize the president of the board to initiate negotiations with Mr. Ben Kirby regarding the contractual agreement governing his employment.
Thank you. Is there support?
100% support.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. Julie?
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
You're muted.
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Ms. Marmel?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes. The motion to extend an offer to Ben Kirby as our next superintendent is approved. So we'll move on to recap the next steps. And John, you want to jump back in here?
Plenty of recapping, so I won't go there. But as far as next steps go, you've selected the person you would like to be your new superintendent. Obviously, you need to offer the position. Enter into contract negotiations. We talked before about utilizing the services of your legal counsel to help you draft the contract, and to share that now with Ben. Typically, boards do this in a lot of different ways, but quite often, the board president takes the lead on that. It's a liaison between the board and the candidate. But of course, that needs to be a very transparent and inclusive process with the entire board, which I'm quite sure this will be. And so the sooner that you are able to successfully bring that process to closure, the next step would be to formally, at a public board meeting, take action to hire officially Mr. Kirby and adopt that contract. And then Mr. Kirby will need to give notice and set a start date. So that's all that's left.
Okay, well, we will be updating the process when we meet next Wednesday. And in the meantime, I will be working with Rick to move that initial process forward. So we
be working with Rick to move that initial process forward, so we are moving ahead without delay. Are there any closing comments? If you really have a closing comment after all that, raise your hand. Julie?
Not so much a comment, but I thought I just heard you mention when we meet next Wednesday. Can we clarify our next meeting? Because I thought it was Monday the 6th.
I'm sorry, Monday. Whatever the 6th is, that's our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Wednesday is in my head.
I know.
Yeah. All right. Comments? Pardon me?
I'm sorry. I was under the impression we were calling Mr. Kirby.
Well, hearing no further comments, we're going to finish the meeting with a call to congratulate Ben Kirby on his selection as superintendent. So let me dial that up. Yes, may I speak with Ben?
This is Ben.
Ben, this is Jim Weedman with Lake Orion Community Schools School Board.
President Weedman, thanks for giving me a call.
It's my pleasure to call you and let you know that the board has selected you as our superintendent. We're looking forward to getting things underway, and we're very excited that you'll be joining us. And I might add, we are live, still in our board meeting.
All right. Well, hey, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I was tuned into the board meeting and was a little bit behind, but I'm incredibly humbled and honored to be selected as a superintendent, and I really look forward to growing with the district and building some successful relationships with the board and the staff and the students and the community, and I'm really looking forward to meeting everybody in person.
Well, on behalf of the board and the community, congratulations, and we very much look forward to getting things underway and getting things started and working together.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. Have a great night.
Take good care, everybody. Bye-bye.
All right. Hearing nothing further. Thank you again, board, for all your work. This meeting is adjourned.